It is now seven o'clock, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, and I call this meeting of the Bellevue Planning Commission to order. Please join me in stating the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do a roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Here.
Mr. Perrin?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Arnie? Mr. Ritz?
Here.
Mr. Ackley?
Here.
Mr. Hankins?
Here.
Ms. Cutsforth?
Present.
Mr. Jacobson?
This meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, a copy of which can be found on the back vestibule and on the city's website. I would also like to remind everyone to please silence or turn off cell phones at this time. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty-second regular meeting in the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Motion by Casey, second by Cutsworth.
Six voted yes, Ms. Kane abstained. Motion carried.
At this time, I would like to, I would entertain a motion to accept on the record all staff reports, attachments, memos, handouts regarding each application. Staff, has there been any updates since it was mailed to the commissioners?
Yes, we have a number of updates. These have been given to you hard copy tonight at your desks, also have been emailed out earlier this week. First, we have a memo from staff. We got a call from a Mr. Rodney Ripley, owner of twenty-nine forty-one, twenty-nine thirty-seven, and twenty-nine thirty-three Chandler Road. This is regarding the rezoning request that we have on the agenda item number three B. He stated he was in favor of the rezoning and asked that his comments be shared and made part of the public record. We also received a number of emails in opposition to that same agenda item, three B. We have an email from Betty Fortenberry. We have a letter from Daniel Doherty. We have an email from the Sirmac family. And then we also have an email from Mary Kelly and Al Markholtz, all in opposition of the requested rezoning for item three B.
Motion to approve the staff reports and attachments, memos, and handouts with the additional five items Ms. Palm just mentioned.
Second.
Motion by Ackley, second by Kane.
All voted yes, motion carried.
We have one item on the consent agenda tonight. Item two A, request to final plat lots one-two-two through one-two-four. No, we have not gotten to three B yet. Item two A, request to final plat lots one-two-two through one-two-four. Bell Lago South, being a plating of a tract of land located in part of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of section eight, township one-three-N, R-one-three-E of the sixth prime meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska. An approval of the first amendment to the Bell Lago South subdivision agreement. Applicant HRC Bell Lago LLC. General location, Forty-Fifth Street and Looking Glass Drive, case number S-dash-two-zero-one-zero-dash-two-three. That is the only consent agenda item. Do I have a motion? Or any wishes of the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, let's make sure nobody wants to speak on the consent agenda item from the public.
Okay, I apologize. I will open this up to public hearing on item two A if anybody is in the public wishes to speak on the record for or against. Seeing none, closing the public hearings. Commissioners?
I'll make the motion for approval based on conformance with approved, with the approved preliminary plat.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Cutsworth.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will go in front of the city council on December first. Moving on to our public hearings, I have, I will read each item into record one at a time. Ask the city to give an update, ask the applicant if present to provide any additional information on it, then open it up to public hearing. I do ask that all, anyone that wishes to speak for or against, please treat others as you wish to be treated. I do reserve the right to cap anyone's time at five minutes if there is a large number of people that wish to speak for or against. Finally, if you do wish to speak for or against, I ask you to come up to the podium, sign in, and state on the record your name and address. First item is item three A, request for a conditional use permit for lot one, Bybin subdivision, for the purpose of auto sales. Applicant Edward A. Gilbert Jr., location two-six-two-zero Greenfield Street, number one hundred. Case number C U P dash-two-zero-zero-nine-dash-zero-three. City, could you?
Sure. The applicant currently operates an auto repair business at this location. This is a pretty typical request for us. He would like to, in addition to the current auto repair, he would like to reserve a maximum of ten stalls to allow for auto sales in addition to what he's currently doing on the property. He's Zoned BG. The BG zoning district does allow for a conditional use permit for automobile sales. He does have enough required parking currently. He recently had eleven stalls restripped on the property. In order to operate the ten stalls, in order to have the ten stalls for the auto sales in addition to his required stalls, he does need seventeen stalls total to be striped. I've talked to the applicant, that's not an issue. It'll be done prior to city council if it has not been done already. Based on the conformance with the zoning and conformance with Article Six, staff is recommending approval of this request.
Is the applicant present and wish to say anything in addition to what's already been said?
Good evening, my name is-
Could you come up to the podium? Yes, sir, and state your name and address for the record.
Sir, my name is David Netch. I am the lawyer for Mr. Gilbert. I just wanted to mention that we have, in fact, placed twenty, a total of twenty-two parking spots in the location. So, we met Ms. Palm's, she was correct, we're done with that. We would answer any questions if you have any for us, thank you.
I'm gonna open up the public hearing, we'll get, and then move on to the, that portion of it. Thank you. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on the record for or against this item? Come on up to the podium. Three A.
It's for auto sales at twenty-six-twenty Greenfield Street.
I didn't hear anything about this, but I live right there, I'm going for the three B, but there's a big junkyard going in. I just looked at the address, that's a junkyard, it's nothing, it's all nothing but trash going on back there. So-
Why don't we pull up a picture, Ms. Palm, of the site we're looking at?
I believe you got the wrong location.
I wish I would've took a picture.
Ma'am, let's just hold on a second, we'll give you a picture of where we're actually looking at.
Right there behind Chandler Inn.
Chandler Inn Bar.
Just hang on, please.
Would you please sign in, sign your name and address on the sign-in sheet, please, for the record, thank you.
My name is Tracy Libert. I'm all for junkyards, you know, I grew up with junkyard, but not right there, that's crazy. I do live one block away from there.
Sorry, Mr. Ackley, G I S is not working, I'm trying to pull up the picture that's in your packet.
Would it help if you want these on overhead?
Let me see if I can get it downloaded, for some reason, it's just really slow.
I have it right on my phone, if you want to pass it around.
Sorry, we don't want to touch anybody's phone, I know.
And they would just like to add more bays to it?
No, they want to include parking stalls to allow for auto sales of the automobiles that they potentially work on.
I don't know where there would be any.
They're gonna use a whole back lot area, which already has vehicle, rundown vehicles, a camper.
Everything, it's just nothing but trash going on right now.
Good, that's all I'm gonna say.
Sir, did you sign in as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, did you state your name for the-
Brian Culp, I live at two-seven-zero-two Margot Street.
And Tracy Libert, same address.
Alright, right now we are in the public hearing portion, so if, and you've got the floor, if you'd like to state anything for or against, kind of more specific.
Well, we apologize, we got late notice on item three B, that's what we were actually here for, but since we heard about three A, we did want to voice our disapproval of adding additional car sales ability to this lot. Because as I said, it's already got vehicles back there that don't look good. There's a camper back there, there's, I believe, even an eighteen-wheeler back there. It doesn't look-
Nothing's fenced in, nothing's-
Yeah, there's, there's no fencing, nothing. It's just open.
And that's the only safe method for my children to walk up the alley to the school. Because there's no sidewalks on Chandler, there's nothing.
And what sidewalks we do have are street level, they're not raised curb sidewalks. Therefore, unfortunately, so many people, we have high traffic in that area, will use the sidewalks that they think are just part of the road.
You guys just approved for an entrance into the storage lot there. Like, seven months ago, maybe a year ago, you approved for Chandler Storage or Milk Storage? Thing it's called?
Which is also gonna increase further traffic.
So-
Chandler's an extremely high-traffic road.
And that whole congestion area from twenty-eighth to twenty-fifth is bad. For traffic.
So, let's go back to this particular application.
Okay.
You know, this sets one building east of Cedar Island Road, and it sits one building behind where we have Chandler Road. To the extent there's garbage, as you would describe it, or junk cars, do you think it would be improved if they actually had ten stalls set aside for cars that they're going to sell?
I don't think that that's ultimately their intent, is to sell quality vehicles, in my personal opinion.
Have you talked to the applicant, sir?
I have not, but I can only base off my personal visual experience of the vehicles I've seen.
This is behind an actual shopping, little shopping center, it has a laundromat and stuff. So, this particular area they're talking about is behind it, but-
So, and I'm not trying to interrupt you guys.
We understand.
Um, what I'd like to do is get, let everyone that's in the public that want, that does want to speak for this happen. Then we'll close that and open it up to the commissioners, and if anyone wants to ask you guys back up, or ask the applicant back up to ask specific questions on these issues, we're gonna do so at that time, I just want to make sure we keep on track for-
Absolutely understandable.
And then we will go to three B afterwards, so don't feel like you have to say both things at once right now.
Right, we apologize.
That's alright.
This is not normal for us.
That was just the first we've seen of this, we're like, oh, that's our neighborhood too, it's-
Yeah, literally right across the street from us.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might add something. In this zoning district and in accordance with the C U P agreement, the applicant is not allowed to have any inoperable vehicles. Staff can make sure of that, and in addition, we have code enforcement presence in that area, so that could be taken care of. But, in regards to the types of vehicles that can be on the property, it can't be salvaged, everything has to be in operable condition, license, registration, things of that nature.
Alright. Public hearing is still open?
I'm Ed Gilbert, I'm actually the one that's applying for the permit. If, if you guys will take note of the map that you have up here. Where I'm looking at here on the right side. There, exactly. She is correct, there is a big pile of beat-up, old junk cars that has nothing to do with my business. My business is on the left side of the map. I have half of the building there, yes, that's, I have half the building. The parking directly in front of that space, and then on the one end of the building, there's a fenced-in area that has some of similar cars, but they're all behind a fence. We don't, that, that's a totally different guy, it's not my business at all. So, I, I don't have that stuff. Every, everything I have is operable, it all runs, it all drives, we do have some inoperable stuff, but it's behind the fence. And that's, you know, we, we keep everything looking very nice around there. The one end of the building is, is a towing company, and we don't have anything to do with that guy, so.
Mr. Gilbert, when you say inoperable, it's not salvaged, is it? Capable of being fixed, it's there to be fixed and-
Stuff the other person owns, yeah, it's all inoperable, there's no wheels-
I'm talking about what you have.
No, no.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
No. Every, everything is under construction, we do a lot of repair work. We're currently, we have a towing business, we, we tow vehicles in to be worked on. I have a two-day, once we're done with work, you have two days to pick your car up, or we start storage, and that's when they go behind the fence. If we have anything that's not moving, or problems with it, it all goes behind our fence. It's not out in the normal, the normal parking lot.
Sir, you have to be at the microphone, so just give, just give them a minute, okay?
I will definitely, if, any, any other questions about-
When we switch it from a public hearing, we will, if any commissioners have questions, we'll ask you back up to the podium so we can get it on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, if you'd like to step up, same, same spiels, say and state your name for the record.
My name's Clark Hurley, I live at two-nine-four-one Chandler Road, I run from Rodney Ripley, I think I mix and missed the, the whole idea of the, I didn't get that letter in the mail, maybe because I'm a renter and everything, but-
Could you, could you step closer to the microphone?
So, the first, the one we were talking about, I believe on corner twenty-eighth and right by Chandler there, that lot for Amigos, I believe it is.
That's our next application.
Yeah, yep, this is just about the, a conditional use permit to allow car sales at this lot right there.
Right behind Chandler Inn.
Yes.
Right, Mr. Gilbert, if I could address it, are you the side, you got that right nine-four-four there? On that side, okay, yeah, his side lot is much, much better kept than the other one. I'm not sure who, who owns that other property over there, but they are junk cars, and I've gone back there, and there's glass and everything else, cars sitting on, you know, three wheels or less. If, if for that, him, himself, I would like to approve that, the other side, I would, I would veto. So, thank you.
Alright, is there anybody else that would wish to speak on the record for or against item three A? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn this over to the commissioners. Commissioners, do you have questions, thoughts?
I have a question for staff. Tammy, when a conditional use is given to a auto sales, have there been past experiences where that's been canceled?
Not so far. We've been doing the conditional use permit agreements for about four or five years, we've done a number of them with auto sales. These folks have to also maintain a good dealer license, they have to follow the rules and regulations of the state. They have to regularly get compliance letters from me, so they've got a lot at stake if they don't follow the rules.
Thank you.
I've got a question for staff. This is for a conditional use for Mr. Gilbert, not for the property owner. So, if he was to vacate the property, say move to a different location, that would null and void this, correct?
No, not necessarily, property owner also signs off on it, so it's, it's with the property.
Okay. Any further questions, is anybody want to make a motion in any which way?
If, if there are no further questions, just in defense of the applicant, I did drive over there today, and that side of the building, I believe, looked perfectly fine. I think it would meet code, the other side, I agree, not so fine. But, with that said, I would make the motion for approval based on compliance with the requirements of zoning ordinance, lack of perceived negative impact to surrounding area contingent upon satisfaction of the technical deficiency, which I don't recall what that was.
And actually, that's been satisfied, so we're okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Casey, second by Cutsworth.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This will go in front of the city council on December fifteenth for public hearing at that time. Moving forward, item three B, request to rezone lot one, wallback addition from RG twenty to BN for the purpose of commercial development. Applicant Amigos Market LLC, general location, West Chandler Road and South Twenty-Eighth Street. Case number Z-dash-two-zero-zero-nine-dash-one-four. Staff, would, could you please give us a synopsis of this one?
Sure, this is a request for a presently vacant property at Twenty-Eighth Street and West Chandler Road. Previously, there was an apartment complex on there that was demoed, after it was condemned by the city. The present zoning of the property is RG twenty, again, based on the past use of the property. The applicant is requesting a change of zone to BN, Neighborhood Business, to allow for a small market, is what he desires to put on the property. He has submitted a conceptual site plan, which has been made part of the staff report. I would just point out that the requested, the requested change of zone does not include site plan approval, so that's just being provided for conceptual purposes. Staff has reviewed this application to include our public works engineers in regards to the conceptual site plan and the use. We've looked at things like impact, traffic, potential access points. With the Neighborhood Business District, that is our most restrictive commercial zoning district. Currently, West Chandler Road is a mix of single-family, multifamily, commercial, and industrial development along that corridor. About a block away or less, you have industrial use in regards to the existing development along the corridor. Some of the uses that could be allowed in the BN zoning district, the intent of the district is to provide for limited commercial uses serving the common and frequent needs of the residents of the immediate vicinity. So, it's not meant to be a large regional commercial draw. Some of the potential uses would be an accounting and tax preparation office, a florist shop, does allow for a small convenience store with no fuel sales. Also allows for a dental clinic, childcare center, dance studio. Would allow for a jewelry store, and it would allow for a real estate office, those are some of the uses that would be allowed under this zoning. Based on the requested zoning and based on Based on the requested zoning and based on, um, our internal review staff as recommending approval um, based on conformance with the zoning ordinance and lack of perceived negative impact to the, um, adjacent properties.
Alright, thank you. Is the applicant, uh, present and if so, did they want to say anything additional?
My name is Dennis Dewar, D U E R, I'm with professional associates architects, I'm representing amigos market. We first, they, uh, Pastor Rivera is here and his son Cesar Rivera, they're, they're the Pastor is the owner, Cesar is his son. Uh, they, we started talking about this in February, just before the pandemic hit. And, and had some preliminary talks with Tammy, at that time, we were looking at a different zoning, we looked back and thought that the neighborhood zoning would be fit for the convenience store that they want. And it also is, we understand it's restrictive, but that's fine with us and there's no gasoline sales or anything. The justification for, uh, zoning change talks about their hours of operation from six in the morning till nine. On, on, and on Sunday, on weekdays and then Sundays would be seven to four. And, uh, they, as I said, there's no anticipated gasoline sales in this convenience store, so. It's twenty four hundred square foot as we look at it now, with, uh, possible potential of adding maybe another thousand square feet, but not anything more than that. Uh, we've already late looked at the traffic, we understand, I mean, at the parking, we understand, we don't have to submit that. We, we did that as our study to make sure everything was okay and we've, uh, worked with Tammy to make sure we have the two entrances that the fire department and the, uh, public works would like us to have. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Alright. Uh, public hearing is now open on this item, if you'd like to speak on the record for or against item three B, please step up to the podium.
Good evening, Brian Culp again, uh, two seven zero two Margot Street. So as we understand, this is supposed to be a local family kind of marketplace with potential for dine in, eating to some degree based off of their other location that they have. Um, as we've already stated, this is a high traffic area, I would highly recommend that somebody do a traffic study because this is going to increase that traffic. Also, this lot happens to be at the apex of a hill from both sides. There have been multiple accidents there. Multiple near misses because as you come up over the top, it's not until the last second that you see that someone stopped. That's one problem. Also, my other concern is this, why do we need another marketplace right there? Literally, to the east of it, point one miles, we have a gas station convenience store. Point one miles, to the west, we have a gas, well, no longer gas station, we have the dynamart. Convenience store right next to the bar and the, uh, laundromat. Now you go another two blocks, probably more like a block and a half. We have a brand new Casey's convenience store there with gas, across the street from there, we have a Dollar General. With plenty of shopping for convenience, milk, eggs, bread, whatever you need. We just don't believe that we need to have another convenience store. When there's so many right there, not to mention, it's going to bring up our taxes, we already know this is gonna happen. So that's my concern, that we've already got enough, we don't need more. Thank you.
Alright.
Want to say my name again?
Yes.
Uh, my name's Clark Hurley. For this, what, I suppose, were two entrances, would it be off of Twenty Eighth Street and Chandler, or is it at the alleyway behind?
They currently have an entrance off of Chandler. Um, and then potential entrance off of South Twenty Eighth as well.
Yeah. I mean, I would, I would say too, there's, I mean, there's a ton of traffic coming on Chandler right there. I got rear ended, my house is just, just, uh, west of that. I got rear ended right in front of my house before, every year, there's multiple people that get hit up right on thirtieth, so yeah, you are cresting that hill. I mean, there, I hear nothing but sirens all day, I feel like this would increase that, uh, potential of having, having more accidents. It's, it's a good neighborhood, it's older neighborhood, I, I like, uh, the other gentleman said, I don't think we need another, um, the little neighborhood market, I mean, this surrounded, the gentleman, guy just built a brand new house right next to that, it's surrounded by houses. Um, for having foot traffic there, I, I don't think that would be safe at all, like, uh, same point, you know, the sidewalk is um, same, same as the road there, it's, um, that, you know, I, I suppose I don't know all the rest of the designs in it, but is there gonna be lights on at nighttime? Um, signs, sound, like, uh, so I would oppose, I, I like the neighborhood I live in. And I, I just don't think that's needed at all for, for all the traffic. Um, and like he was saying, we, we have all these convenience stores everywhere. Um, I, I, you know, the idea of having, I think she was saying with different things you could get code for, like a florist or jewelry shop, I think that would keep traffic down and be a better idea, something that would improve the neighborhood as opposed to swing the other way. I suppose that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name's Tracy Leibert and, um, we just found out tonight, not even a half hour before this meeting was starting. Um, we live like six houses, maybe seven houses down the street away and I don't know why we weren't informed. Um, all of, there's neighborhood kids that we do not, there is no sidewalks. The sidewalks you guys proved, what, ten years ago? Um, they were an extension of a widening of a street, so people are driving on them, it's nothing. So if you guys are gonna put another business and put sidewalks in, um, more streetlights, we have one street light on our block, one, that's it. Um, I also understand they're gonna apply for a liquor license, so liquors, there's gonna be liquor into that. That's gonna bring up a little bit of crime into our neighborhoods, um, just with the traffic going on with the um, storage lot, my ring camera system goes off every ten minutes now. Before, it would go off maybe twice a day. Lately, they've been doing all their construction, it's every ten minutes. Um, if I turn my volume up, you guys would sure, surely hear it right now. Um, my kids have no sidewalks at all, I wanna stress that because I don't know, you guys must have sidewalks in your neighborhood and don't, you know, understand not having a sidewalk. There's not a single sidewalk in any of our neighborhoods. So this is gonna bring up traffic, I've almost gotten rear ended. The number of cars that have been dropped off on my street, I live just if you go right here and just turn to the first street down on Margot, right there. So I have the increased traffic, I've had nothing but cars dropped off that were stolen vehicles. Um, I've had break-ins at my home and that's just from just little stuff that's around, we have a bar that's around the corner, we have the dynamart and to add one more marketplace that sells alcohol, I don't think it's a good idea at all. I feel for the safety of my children, I don't allow them to even walk to school down Chandler and you guys are gonna increase that traffic. You guys are rip, letting my child, kid's childhood get ripped away. I've asked you guys not to extend milts, you guys still did, it's gonna keep drawing more and more traffic. So that's what I gotta say.
Ma'am, would you please sign the sign in sheet?
She signed in on item three A. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak for or against item three B on the record? Real quick.
Uh, for, would the, would they also have a plan for water runoff, I mean, that's a large area. Like, what would that do to all the surrounding houses?
Yes, so anyone who does construction has to submit, um, a post-construction plan as far as detention and runoff. They have to capture the first half inch of runoff, um, and there has to be a plan for that, so at time of building permit, that is all looked at by our engineers. Um, so Bellevue follows the same standards as Omaha and everybody else in the watershed, so those items would have to be met.
I'm not seeing anybody else that wishes to speak, I don't think there's anyone in the overflow room tonight. So I'm gonna co, I'm gonna close the public hearing and turn it over commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff. Uh, regards to city design standards, are they required to have a sidewalk as well as a, um, privacy fence? When it butts up against the residential houses?
Not necessarily a privacy fence, but they'll have to do landscaping. Um, there are stringent design standards on commercial property for landscaping and building materials, so those are done as part of the building permit process, um, so that would all be done under that building permit process. And sidewalks, yes, are a requirement for construction, so if there are not sidewalks over there, they have to put in sidewalks unless they receive a waiver from the city council.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Having been over there recently and, I mean, at a time where close to drive time, so heavy traffic, difficult to turn left on, from Twenty Eighth to Chandler. What criteria would, uh, have to be in place to stipulate a traffic study along Chandler?
Typically, that's requested by our engineering department, um, they look at zoning, they look at potential uses and then they require a traffic study based on that. Um, the applicant's architect alluded to this earlier, when they originally came in, they were looking for a BG zoning. I was not in favor of that, I was not in favor of that just because of the wide range of uses that that would afford at that corner. Um, I thought that that would have too much impact on the neighborhood, um, and yes, potentially too much traffic impact. That's why I steered them into the BN zoning district, they're amenable to that because it was not his intention to ever do a convenience store with fuel sales. Things of that nature, so that is, that has been looked at and yes, our trap, our engineering department determines whether or not a traffic study should be required. They could still request one prior to a building permit, you know, they would have that prerogative, but I can tell you that they have looked at this. They have looked at the potential zoning, the potential uses and they're comfortable with it. Ma'am, the, the public hearing's closed, so they have to open the public hearing, you have to come to the mic.
I, I would like to say something on the record for, on this though, um, because the people that have spoken have brought up some very good points, especially about the traffic. Our board is kind of got blinders on where the question in front of us is to change the zoning from one to another, not to approve a convenience store there, but rather to approve this zoning that would allow these items and then the owner can choose what to do there. My suggestion on things like the traffic, which is, um, very outside of our control, is that it whether or not this gets approved tonight, to go to the city council to talk to your rep and to bring those items up to them who have the power to make those items and to do those. So I want, you know, just on the record to know that these are, uh, very serious, very real, uh, relevant items for this. But for our board, we have kind of the blinders of the decision of do we, uh, recommend that the city council change the zoning on this parcel to a different zoning and allow the owner to then build according to that zoning? And so, I just wanna kinda remind everyone that that's, we're not approving a convenience store tonight, we're approving a BN zoning change.
That, that said, I, I do have two questions for the applicants.
Yes, sir.
When this property was purchased, I believe in July of twenty nineteen, was the intent to put this market there at that time?
Did you intend to put the market here at that, at that time, Cesar?
Not at the time.
You need to come up to the mic.
If you're not too, if you're not close enough to the, the microphone, it doesn't record it and then.
And could you say your name for the record, please?
Cesar Rivera.
Thank you.
So, at the time, that was not our intent, at the time we sold the lot. And I myself, me and my father, we live in Bellevue as well, I live right on thirty sixth and Chandler. Uh, we lived in the neighborhood for a while, we thought, hey, you know what, there's an opportunity there. Maybe in the future, build a house or build something, what happened was last year, we sold our business. Uh, we see opportunity right now where we're at. We take every concern into play, uh, and we think it'd be a great, you know, to start, to start something back up for the family. Uh, it was not our intent to start a business again, you know, but we wanna try something new in a different area.
And, and then a follow up question, do you intend to sell alcohol at this location?
I do intend to sell alcohol at this location, I cannot deny that.
Thank you.
Quick question while you're up there, um, are you designing this to have dine in also and?
No, so this is not gonna be like the first business we had, our first business did have a grocery store and a dine in, so basically this is to go. Basically, uh, there might be some, let's see, rotisserie chicken or some beans and rice and whatnot, but there's no dining in play. Everything will be pretty much to buy and to walk out the store.
Commissioners, wishes, thoughts?
You know, for myself, I'm torn on this one, I grew up, uh, we had about a block from us, a little corner grocery, Roy's Cartwheel Market and it was all houses around it. There's any numbers of areas in especially South Omaha or parts of Bellevue where again, you used to have the the neighborhood bar, the neighborhood market, the neighborhood, all the little businesses that were interspersed. So in many respects, this is no different than that and it's also consistent because we've got businesses across the street, all of the things that the applicant's uh, opponents have cited, I mean, we got dynamite, dynamart, Casey's Dollar General. Uh, the only concern I have, I guess, the hilltop, I, I am familiar with the area, I drive from thirty sixth and Harrison down through Chandler regularly or you come down thirtieth. And it's harder to get across thirtieth because there is no traffic signalization, there's, and again, you do have the hill there. I guess, is there anything staff from a traffic calming device, again, we've got, uh, stop signs on thirty sixth and Chandler, we've got stop lights on twenty fifth and Chandler, so we've really got a one mile stretch with no stops. If we were to, I guess, request a stop sign or request some kind of traffic calming devices along there, what's our, what's our process for that?
That's something that would have to be looked at again by our engineering department, um, there's certain warrants that have to be met, certain engineering things have to look at in order to put those items in place. Um, I can't sit here tonight and say that, yes, we could put a traffic light there, do a four way stop. Um, that would be something that would have to be up to our traffic, you know, our engineers and would have to meet all of the, the guidelines for the traffic manual.
I feel as Mr. Ackley does, I, you know, this is a good location for something like this, but I really feel that these neighbors have justification and concerns about the traffic. And it's worrisome. I, I guess, the Chandler Road is the city's jurisdiction, not a state.
No, it's, it's the city's jurisdiction. Um, as I mentioned before, prior to issuance of any building permit, you know, once we know the exact size, use, all of that. Um, public works is obviously involved in having to approve those permits. Um, that's typically the time that in a situation like this, they would request traffic study or, you know, look at specific, um, traffic issues or again, stop signs, whatever the case may be.
Something has to be done along that street somewhere to help these people who live there.
In terms of the sidewalk issue, Ms. Palm, that's been raised, again, they're all correct, it's at, it's at street level. I know the farther east you go, just before you get to twenty fifth streets, you've got fire hydrants that are actually within two feet of the driveline when you're driving along there, I've always wondered how snowplow hasn't clipped those off in the wintertime. Um, is there anything from a pedestrian standpoint? Um, again, we, even if we required it just for this lot, we can't require it for everything that's around there.
I, I can tell you that currently the sidewalk issue is a hot topic in city council. There's currently a sidewalk task force looking at issues such as these. Um, staff is very aware these issues exist. I think you now have city council members that are also extremely aware that these issues exist. So hopefully through that process as it plays out, um, there will be some solutions in the near future for areas such as these, whether it's sidewalk districts, whether, you know, the city takes up the cause, whatever the case may be, but that is something that is currently being looked at.
Do you know what the uh, speed limit is downtown on Mission Avenue? I'm thinking of where the quick shop is. Again, that used to have three houses on the one side of it, certainly within a neighborhood, various businesses interspersed. Is that a twenty-five mile an hour on?
I'm pretty sure it's twenty-five. Yep, it goes down to, yep, I was gonna say, it goes down the farther um, east that you go along Mission.
How about Chandler? Is that thirty, thirty-five?
I think that's a thirty-five.
Again, when you compare it to Mission Avenue, again, we've got lots of businesses interspersed with houses and that quick shop in the old town does very well because again, it's the only place within walking distance, people can get the quick groceries and things. I know one of the comments we had, I think from Mr. Kulp, was on the the number of other amenities available. Unfortunately, from a zoning perspective, you know, for a person who wants to take the risk on opening a business, it's not our purview on whether there's already other competing businesses in place. That's an economic risk for them as opposed to a zoning uh, matter. That was more thoughts out loud than actual guidance, but. As a city street, Ms. Palm, do we control or the, who controls what speed limits we put on Chandler?
City does. So that's something the Public Works Department can look at. Um, you know, that's something I can discuss with them. I don't know how recently they've looked at that.
Cause it is a one-mile stretch between the lights on thirty-sixth and the lights on, or the stop signs on thirty-sixth, the lights on twenty-fifth. And with the hill there, if you're, if you're heading from east to west, you certainly get going pretty good before you get down to thirty-sixth Street. That might be one way to calm the traffic a bit, or at least have guidance there to calm it.
Sure. That's something I can discuss with our Public Works Department.
I guess just looking at some of the other notes from comments we received tonight, again, the traffic study, the sidewalks, the hill have all been discussed. Other amenities, I just covered that. Again, we don't look at that from a zoning perspective. Whether or not this would raise taxes in the neighborhood, uh, potentially could have the opposite effect as well for houses next to business. I mean, there's an argument that your house value is less, which maybe would be a good thing from a tax perspective. Uh, Mr. Hurley, I think you commented on lights. Again, city will have guidelines on the lighting, and it normally has to be downgrade and not shining into neighboring yards. Um, and then comments we received on liquor license, again, I think there's any number of other liquor licenses within a six-block area here, so I don't see that as as a, a new detriment to the area because there's a number of them in place already.
Sir, we're, public hearing's closed and we have to have you at a mic to pick you up.
I guess I'm not aware of any drive-through feature. Again, I guess, question for staff, if they did do a drive-through, ultimately you'd have to have a site plan that has traffic. The ability to wrap traffic around safely and enter and exit, wouldn't you?
Correct, and I'm just looking, I don't know that he can do a drive-through.
Yeah, everything's set up for.
So I guess, I'm, I'm thinking that the second street cut that would be on twenty-eighth Street, somebody leaving that, if there's any concerns of cars leaving that, shining across twenty-eighth to whatever house is there, maybe that's what they was concerned about. I would say hours of operation seem to be pretty limited comparatively to other uh, convenience stores that are twenty-four hours typical, so. Um, I don't know if there's houses across the street or whatnot on that, but you would imagine that it would be later night, hopefully, or, or not late night, having a lot of people leaving that. And this has gone out to all the departments, the Public Works, the Street Department, all that, and adding a second street cut there was no concern or anything from any of them?
No, it was not.
Well, it sounds like maybe the, the major sticking issue for many of the commissioners is the traffic issue, not necessarily of a convenience store, the rezoning. Would it be reasonable to delay vote on this and give Public Works an opportunity to respond to some of the concerns that the commission, the planning commission has?
We could do that, however, I don't know how I don't know, without having a building permit and without, since we don't have site plan, I don't know how, what kind of specific information you're going to get. I guess you'd have to give me direction as to what you want, but like I said, typically, um, you know, they've looked generally at the uses, um, they've looked at the access points, they're okay with that, they've looked at the conceptual site plan, they're okay with it. Um, so I, I guess my preference would be if you do want to delay it, I'd have to have um, very specific direction as to what types of information you want from them. And again, keeping in mind, it might be difficult to do that without having a, a building permit moving forward with that.
You know, just looking back through the history, Ms. Palm, that this previously was a thirteen-unit apartment building, and I recall that being there. And previously apartments, wasn't that a small school in that neighborhood?
Correct.
They converted a school into an apartment building?
Yes.
Again, so we've certainly had buildings there in the past that have had traffic coming and going on. It was a school in terms of morning, evening, afternoon, and when it was a thirteen-unit apartment building, uh, you'd have a lot more, a lot more cars going in and out at that time. Again, it's gotten used to being quiet, because I remember that was condemned probably eight or ten years ago already. I guess, Mr. Casey, to your point, I'd be inclined that we would move this forward to city council, one way or the other, and let the council, again, if, if traffic is something we would make a recommendation on, whether that's speed limit, traffic study, whatever it may be, and let the, let the city council think through that along with the actual application.
Well, with your reminder of what was in, in place at that location before, I had forgotten that, so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
I think the, I would lean more towards recommending a traffic study be completed on that Chandler Road, considering there's been a lot of uh, construction in development in the last couple of years, and there's no MAPPA data available. If you were to, if you're indicating that that's, your recommendation would include a suggestion for the city council, I think that a traffic study is what's required there, especially as you spe- spe- specified that one-mile stretch.
The one thing I would point out is keep in mind a traffic study is at the expense of the applicant. The city doesn't do those.
Okay, with that, I would, any other discussion? I would make a recommendation for approval based upon conformance with the zoning ordinance and lack of perceived negative impact to the surrounding area with an amendment to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan for this property, and with a suggestion that the city council looks at this, they consider whether a traffic study is warranted and whether traffic calming measures such as speed limits or or kind of the traditional steep speed bumps somewhere along that area would be warranted as well.
I'll second.
Motion by Ackley, second by Kane.
Let me put it in.
Mr. Casey, if yours isn't working, we just have to have you for the record say what your vote is, so Ms. Van Horn can put it in.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will go in front of the city council on December fifteenth?
Again, appreciate everybody coming out and testifying on that. Would encourage you to carry that forward to a city council, the extent you have further questions or concerns.
Continuing to item three C, request to rezone lot two, Wolf Creek Replat four from BGH to RG eight PS for the purpose of multifamily development. Applicant Wolf Creek Apartments two LLC, general location, one zero nine zero four, South Fifteenth Street. Case number Z dash two zero one zero dash one five. Staff, could you provide a synopsis?
Sure. And Mr. Brown, I know you have a PowerPoint presentation, so if you want to go ahead and get that loaded up while I uh, uh, present. Uh, Mr. Brown, on behalf of the Wolf Creek Apartments two LLC, is submitting a request to um, rezone lot two Wolf Creek Replat four, um, located south of uh, Cornhusker on South Fifteenth Street. Uh, currently, the property is zone BG eight, which is heavy general business. He's requesting it to rezone to RG eight PS. Uh, the PS does require the site plan approval, um, so that is part of the request this evening. Um, Mr. Brown's uh, company previously did apartment complex just to the north. Um, they're wrapping up completion on that. In between that property and this property, um, sits two hotels. Um, Mr. Brown is proposing to do a hundred and ten units in one building. Building would be a mix of studio, one, two, and three-bedroom units. Uh, in addition, three detached garage structures would also be on the property. Um, site plan shows adequate landscaping, also shows adequate parking, um, has been reviewed by staff, has been reviewed by the Public Works Department. Traffic study was required on this application, um, has been reviewed by our engineers, um, no issues with what is being proposed. Um, our, our Public Works staff does not believe this will have a negative impact in regards to traffic on the area. Um, based on the fact that uh, Mr. Brown does have the development just to the north, um, there's no immediate residential adjacent to this. We've got the Highway seventy-five right away. We have the South Fifteenth Street right away, and then we have undeveloped uh, drainage outlot across Fifteenth Street and to the south, um, as well. Based on that, staff is recommending um, approval of this request, uh, based on compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood and the lack of perceived negative impact. I know Mr. Brown is here and he wants to show, do a brief PowerPoint presentation for you folks.
Scott Brown, uh, partner with Quantum Real Estate. I had a pretty presentation, but it's not loading up, so uh, you'll bear with us. About three years ago, we were here in front of the planning commission, uh, with the property actually to the south of Walmart, a little bit south of, we're at Planet Fitnesses today, ten acres. Uh, and we were in front of the planning commission requesting uh, down zoning of the property from commercial to uh, RG twenty uh, PS. Uh, we showed you uh, the site plan, uh, and also contained uh, two buildings of seventy-two units each. And both buildings uh, have elevators, and then two other buildings that were thirty units each, which have attached garages. Um, this is commonly called Class A apartments. Um, we've received approval, and we have them pretty well built out. The last building is gonna be coming online here uh, end of December. Uh, but for the most part, um, construction's gone well, leasing's gone well. Uh, we had ribbon cutting ceremony at the end of October, Chamber was there, the mayor, and it was very exciting. Uh, currently, we're about seventy-seven percent leased out, and uh, the project has just been um, something we're really proud of. Which leads us to today. We want to continue with momentum and develop another um, building just south of where the hotel is. Uh, it'd be an extension of our ladder two forty-one project. It'd be a single building, if we can scroll down, sorry, where I can do that? There we go. Just a single building. We did this building in Columbus, Nebraska, and it's a, it's a great uh, product. What it is, is um, a hundred and ten units. We'll have uh, two hundred and twenty parking stalls, a lot of studios and one-bedrooms. In fact, that's probably two-thirds of the uh, unit mix. And we'll have a lot more three-bedrooms on this prod- product as well. Uh, but more importantly, um, we'll have attached workout room, community area, and leasing office, uh, so it's all contained within that, within that building. Worked with uh, planning and um, the market uh, is, is such that, um, I think we can do something really special here and finish out the Wolf Creek area, uh, this being the last lot that's, that's undeveloped. Uh, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. If there's anybody in the back that wishes to speak, seeing none, closing the public hearing, turning it over to commissioners.
Mr. Brown, after your last experience here, who would have thought that a neighborhood corner market would be more controversial than a hundred and ten-unit apartment complex? Now, appreciate uh, you guys coming back for a second time in Bellevue. Obviously, the, the uh, previous project you brought forward uh, went through, it's looking great. I think this site makes even more sense than the prior site in terms of more isolated, absolutely nothing else around it. Um, the only concern as raised by Mr. Carmichael was a slight traffic concern, and yet there's nothing indicating that that's a stopper at all. I know, uh, is it since the last uh, complexes were approved that we added uh, right turn lane on Cornhusker, or had that been done? I know they were trying to do something on Cornhusker, or there was talk of that at the time.
That might have been in the plans, but not done yet.
Yeah. Anyway, from my perspective, this seems like a no-brainer, and we've got no controversy here this evening as we did on a previous application.
If I remember correctly, Mr. Casey, you were concerned last time about uh, school buses?
And I still am. Uh, you know, I'll go on the record to say I, I'd be totally against this project in terms of uh, traffic congestion at Cornhusker and Fifteenth. But on the other hand, um, I'm absolutely in favor of it because I know there is a need for, for apartments in the Bellevue area, so I'm a little torn. But obviously, we've survived latitude forty-one so far, and uh, I don't, guess it's gotten a whole lot worse at that intersection, so. I guess, as Mr. Ackley, I'm probably in favor of this also.
I guess, question for the applicant. My guess is with the number of studios you have in this, is it targeted more for airmen, military, and the Bellevue University students nearby? In other words, what's your?
I, I don't have a great answer for that, but I can tell you our leasing, um, there's just a need for a lot more smaller units, more affordable, but that we can build that, that are really fantastic to live in. And so it, it's a very efficient product. Um, but there, there is a large demographic though of, of military, um, single individuals. Just, I think people looking for uh, something nicer, and the, and the location also is fantastic.
What's the uh, market rent for the three different units?
I can't even, probably one better, a studio's probably in the six fifty range, one bedroom's maybe one uh, eight fifty, uh, two bedrooms probably around eleven fifty, a three bedroom's probably around fourteen fifty, be my guess. It's, it's in that range.
Commissioners, any further questions? Does anybody wish to make a motion?
There's no further questions or comments, I would make a recommendation for approval of this application based upon compatibility with. based upon compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood and the lack of perceived negative impact.
Second? Motion by, uh, Ackley, second by Hankins.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will go in front of the city council on December fifteenth.
Thank you so much. I do want to thank, uh, Mr. Ackley. Uh, three years ago, he was the one that was very supportive of our project and very instrumental in helping us get the rezoning. And because of that, I just wanted to, for the record, say thank you, and the rest of the planning commissioners for having belief in us, and, uh, appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thanks for doing business in Bellevue.
Thank you.
Alright. Last item on the agenda tonight is item-